Call the Town of Oliver Springs Water Board meeting for July the 10th to order. Roll call Joe.
Roll call Miller, Jeff Bass, Charlie Bailey.
Here.
Lisa Van Hooch, Terry Holland.
Here.
Becky Devaney.
Here.
We got three out of six, we have four.
Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Barry.
Yes, Barry, I see number two. Uh, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from June the 5th meeting? I want to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Um, do they have any discussion? No discussion, roll call Joe.
Charlie Bailey.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
Becky Devaney.
Yes.
Barry.
Thank you, sir. All right, any citizen want to come forward and discuss any items that they have?
Mayor update. We are below 50% on our water loss. So, uh, Corey just informed me it's 47.8%, uh, which we haven't seen in 40s since probably Cecil Crow was mayor, so that's exciting. We're no longer buying water from ACWA. It's been what, a month almost, Corey, since we purchased any water?
Looking over.
Yeah, so you're talking savings right there, 26,000 to $8,000 a month where we're not purchasing any water. That's phenomenal. Um, just, uh, Rick, Corey and Scott, uh, the new utility director, Scott's doing a phenomenal job, the guys are responding, seems to be very well under his leadership, so very thankful for that. And again, the word for the year for me was be a good steward, right? I want every taxpayer to know that we're trying to be the best stewards that we can, and that right there shows you we're continuing to improve and get better. Uh, we're not there yet, we're not where we want to be, uh, but damn, from 78% to 47%. So, we're trending in the right direction, I'm excited. I'll shut up, Corey, go ahead.
First thing is, uh, your one of the handouts, uh, this will be the utility board training requirements. Um, so this is set forth from the public office. So, each, initial training, each board member must obtain 12 hours of training within the first 12 months of their initial election or appointment. Initial 12 hours only required for the first election or appointment and not subsequent elections or appointments. So, continued education after the 12 hours. So, once a board member is satisfied with their initial 12 hours after election or appointment, their continued education period of three years begins on the following January the 1st. Each board member must receive a total of six hours of training within a three-year period. Uh, as a best practice, it is recommended that board members receive a minimum of two hours of training each calendar year. So, we are covered under that best practice by the budget workshops that we have. So, we're able to get continued education hours for, uh, your water board budget workshop and any other type of workshop that we would have. So, your second sheet is the list of the home run, pump trouble, uh, training programs they have, I think there's 14 over there now. Uh, you can only take these one time. Uh, the last sheet is the sheet that I have to turn in to the Tennessee Board of Utility Regulation. So, this is annual statement, uh, the detailing of each board member's hours and the classes that they've taken. Uh, water plant, wait, well, any questions about those requirements?
Yes, so, appears the website, the grid.
It, uh, it is, uh, and this, all this stuff's available on the state of Tennessee Pump Trollers website.
So, do we need to do all 14?
No, if you, if you've already done the 14 classes, you can only do them one time. So, you'll get a certificate for each one of these classes, so when you finish that, bring the certificate to me, that way we can keep it in the, uh, in your employee file. But like I said, we can just take those one time for them to count. Uh, they were adding at least one or two classes a year, but it looks like these are kind of the same ones.
But I think I did this like two years ago.
Yeah.
Same.
They are.
But you go to the side and just pick some more.
Well, if, if there's any more that you have not taken, you can, you can take those. But I think the last one that they've added, uh, were the financial accountability, the fraud awareness, the hem attached utility training, water through systems. So, you'll have to have your credentials to log in, uh, to get to that sheet there, or to that page there. Uh, water plant, all state reports to admit for June, spring sources still full. Uh, your water pumpage is down from 850 gallons per minute to about 690 to 730 gallons a minute. Uh, that, that's based off the number of leaks that we fixed in the past month, month and a half. Uh, again, kind of based on what the mayor said there, we've not purchased water since June the 5th of 2025. Capital projects for the water plant, uh, we have a turbometer that's starting to act up on us, uh, so I'm getting quotes on those. Ballpark, that's going to be about $5500. And I'll have those for the August meeting. Uh, reports that we've been working on, CCR is complete, uh, all that's been submitted. Uh, emergency operations plan's completed, updated, and these next four are the ones that I'm currently working on, the updates right now. Uh, it's your drought management plan, uh, your standard operating procedures, uh, source water protection plan, and occupational health and safety plan. Uh, so Scott, myself, and Rob, the water man, are actually working on those four. Uh, distribution system, again, we're 47.8% water loss. Projections for July, we're probably going to be around 41, 43%. Uh, again, projections through the end of the year, if we can maintain this and continue on, we're probably going to be in the upper 30s by the end of 2025. Uh, water sales, uh, for May was 7.8 million, and they were down just a little bit, 7.7 million in June. Uh, this is back off the water loss, your water leaks fix in June, 19 service line leaks, three mainline breaks. We had an eight inch mainline break on the home ramp, has roughly 182 gallon a minute leak. Uh, Bennett Road, we had two of a six inch, one of roughly 100, 110 gallon a minute, and then an additional 30 to 50 gallon a minute, and then we fixed an eight inch on Powder Mill Road. So altogether, your flow, kind of leak reductions, roughly 340 to 410 gallons per minute. So that corresponds with the, I mean, obviously, the not purchasing water management accounting by the reduction in coverage at the water plant. The office, uh, citizens portal, uh, that's up and running, customers can view their usage and bill history, they can set up the auto pay and email billing. One important help for customers is to call in and update their cell phone numbers and their email addresses. Uh, local government software, the ACH payments, we're still getting that, working on getting that set up, everything should be in operation by September. And that's all I've got, uh, for the utility.
Thank you for it. All right, Ms. Bailey, you got anything?
Hey, one thing I would add, hang on there, let's do this real quick. Uh, your other handout we have right there, uh, the pool adjustments.
Yeah.
So one thing I want to go through real quick. Uh, this is kind of what, and we've had upside, I think, five or six this past week, and I think Deborah said we had five or six that's come in, uh, since notes. But this is, this is what a pool adjustment looks like. So this, this is your initial adjustment form, uh, that, that ends up telling what your sewer adjustment is, second page is like the work order, that's where we track the current readings on the meters, and then once they're completed, filled up, we go back and get the new reading. Third sheet would be the billing and usage history for each customer, and then the big thing of tracking this is your data log, so that's your level by 17 sheet here. So the big thing is, when the customer wants a pool adjustment and contacts the office kind of prior to, we're able to go out and get those, uh, readings off the meter, and then we can actually tell off this meter profile, and this one right here, she was ever pulled live data from. Uh, so, so the customer said they were going to start at 12:00 AM, well, this corresponds 12:00 AM through 12:00 PM, there's roughly 6,000 gallons filled up in this pool. So that's, that's one of the benefits of your new camstruck meter software, has been able to track all of this. And like I said, the, we've had, I think, probably 12 now in the past, I guess, couple of weeks that's come in, so, uh, it's an opportunity for the customers to be able to save a little bit of money, fill up a pool. But that's all.
Speaking of camstruck meters, are all the meters changed out now, 100%?
They are. Yeah, everything, everything's changed out, everything's complete, only thank you, like, on your meter, uh, the meter project would be your collector sites, and we're still working with the cellular providers about getting access to their antennas.
Good to, all right, Ms. Bailey.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Hall.
I was down here paying my water bill, and one guy was confused that he didn't have sewer, so he thought he'd get a break on his water. But if you don't have sewer, you have no sense coming.
You know, so any, any municipality and utility that receives federal, state funds, you cannot write water off. So, the, the pool adjustments, I mean, they don't, I mean, they're not applicable for, for somebody that does not have sewer.
I did see that the, uh, number was down on the water meter pulling through.
Yeah.
It is, I'd missed the last meeting, so they needed that.
Deborah and Wendy are doing a very good job in reaching out, being very proactive versus reactive, and that's cut down on a lot of the meters being pulled, very thankful for that.
So another thing too, uh, which is on the, uh, the city council agenda, is this privacy policy that we've got in the paper where we can send out these bulk text messages and emails and stuff.
Are we close to that, that's my next question.
Yeah, we are, I mean, this has been the last thing right here, is getting this, this policy, privacy policy approved.
So, like with that big main road, those people in that area would get a text.
We could.
That's why it's all, that's some of the people could be ready for people.
Yeah, and, and that was what I mentioned earlier, but it's very important for customers to call the office and update their information, their cell phone numbers, their email addresses, that way they can receive, receive these messages.
And I did, I'm on the citizen board myself, so it would be handy if you don't know you paid, if you're not sure you paid your bill, as soon as you log in, it says, pay. You don't really, you can't see the history that you paid, you see the history of bills, and you at least verify, like your vacation or something, you could either see it and pay it, or, or see that it's still.
Correct.
So that would stand, and it does go back to August 23rd.
Oh, all right.
So if you want to do your little math and average, and you could really help with that
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Devaney?
Nothing at this time.
You know, and I, I'm just going to take a second to kind of brag on the fact, the updates that we're making in our system to make it more efficient, smoother, more customer friendly, right? I mean, we are, that gentleman two months ago was right, I mean, we're stuck in 1982. Um, you know, but with Corey and now Deborah working together, we are bringing it up to date, and it just takes time, like Joe mentioned to the gentleman, you know, we don't have 5,000 customers. So, a change for us, we have to plan it, we have to set funds aside, and it's just not instantaneous, because we don't have the funds just to go and do everything that we want to do as quickly as we like to do it. But, you know, here we are, with this city manager, this council, this water board, with the lady, Ms. Deborah we have running, we're moving it forward. And that, and, and I think the citizens, you know, need to understand, all these positive changes are coming, maybe not as quick as we'd like them, but things are happening, right? I mean, finally, finally, and, uh, so I just want to just pat yourself on the back a little bit, and, hey man, we're making progress. And I don't mean progress in a literal sense, I just mean bringing us up to date to where it's easier, more seamless, smoother, and customers, more customer friendly, right? So, all right. Well, I don't think we have any old business, I don't see any new business, unless I'm missing something, like Corey. So, with all that being said, a motion to adjourn. So move, all in favor, say aye. Call the Town of Oliver Springs City Council for July the 10th to order. Roll call Joe.
Roll call Miller, Jeff Bass, Charlie Bailey.
Here.
Lisa Van Hooch.
Here.
Terry Holland.
Here.
Becky Devaney.
Here.
We've got three out of six, we have four.
Thank you, Joe. Would you please leave us some more prayers?
Our Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the many freedoms that we enjoy, that have been paid for in blood and in treasure over many years our nation's been in existence. We thank you for the men and women that came before us and made these sacrifices, that we might enjoy this freedom. We pray that we can be worthy of our ancestors and worthy of these sacrifices. We pray that we would study thy word and hide your word in our heart, that we might not sin against thee, and that we might use the wisdom imparted through your holy word to guide us as we govern our little town, and for all the folks in the United States as we govern this great nation, that we may be shining, a shining example of thy mercy and thy grace and thy love and thy bounty that thou offers. Be with our servicemen and women, home and abroad, our first responders, and policemen and firemen, and all that protect us, and we pray for peace in all the hotspots throughout the world. We pray that Holy Spirit will work in such a way in the hearts of all those folks involved, where they would seek fit to work through the differences in their peace. We ask all these things in thy son's name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to do the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from June 19? I'll make a motion, uh, Mr. Holland, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second, Ms. Devaney. Any, uh, any discussion? Any corrections? Roll call Joe.
Uh, Charlie Bailey.
Yes.
Lisa Van Hooch.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
Becky Devaney.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody from the delegation would like to come forward and speak, or from citizens that would like to come forward and speak, now would be the time. Mayor update real quick, and I won't say much about this, I'll let Corey and, and Charlie talk about it, but Ju- July 19th is our back to school event. Really looking forward to that. Um, also, obviously, in the news lately, there's been a lot of discussion about flooding and what's happened in Texas and New Mexico and the incredible loss of life, and so I've had multiple people ask me, hey, does the city have a plan? And so, even just a couple days ago, I was in the mayor's meeting for Ron Kelly, and Wade Criswell reiterated, hey, do you, you know, what, what is every mayor's plan? And so I got with Chief and Corey and, and Justin, and I spent probably an hour and a half with Justin yesterday, I was incredibly impressed with the response plan that we have as a town, uh, not just for our city, but also regional with, through Anderson County, um, Rescue Squad and others, and I was very, very pleased. So, no plan is perfect, and, you know, but, all that being said, it's something that has gotten a lot of attention, and, you know, we have, uh, water rescue here in our town, we also have floodwater rescue available to us just right down the road, um, and, because the bottom line is, we do have two creeks that merge right here in our downtown, and a supercell event could be absolutely catastrophic. Uh, and I say supercell event, something like 15 inches of rain in a two to three hour period, and all of a sudden floodwaters of 30, 35 feet in our downtown would be just completely catastrophic, but.
Mr. Mayor, it was your three in July 1967, we had that flood, and Burnery City right now is under about eight feet of water.
Wow, wow. So, actually, Mayor, um, County Mayor.
Mayor Burnery, J.H. Burnery was the mayor then.
Really? Wow. And so, all that being said, you know, we do have a plan in place, and I want our people to know that we have a plan in place, and we have resources available to us, so, um, all that being said, um, something that I want to bring to council to consider, and I've spoken with Chief Bailey about this, and, and Corey, and also Charlie, is next July the 4th, I would love to have a family, um, day at Arrowhead Park. You all may not know this, but your mayor is an avid, avid, avid firework maniac. I love fireworks. I love them a little too much, I'm not going to lie. Uh, and we put on just an incredible show, and, uh, here's the deal, we need to build a sense of community, we've done an incredible job, um, the library, Charlie continuing to build on that sense of community with community events, and this is something that my business, Big Orange Tree, would be the headline sponsor, and I'm, I'm telling you tonight, I'm willing to donate $10,000 to help make this a reality, okay? But what I need, what would need to happen is we'd need to pass an ordinance allowing fireworks to be shot. Um, and we could, and again, I've talked to Chief Bailey, and Chief is hoping to bring something to me to give to you all, uh, before the August meeting. That would be very, um, safety conscious and pretty restrictive, but also would allow us to do an event at the park. And so, and it would be an event that would basically be free of charge, um, to families, and that's, and that's what this is about, is about bringing families together and having a memorable experience, and, um, you know, where there's water slides, and/or bounce houses, and bounce slides, and all that, the whole nine yards. So, um, again, just want to put that kind of out there, and if you have any thoughts or any questions or concerns, you know, see myself, or Corey, or, uh, Chief Bailey, um, so, but all that being said, um, Joe also gave us a memo to look at for a garbage pickup, to consider whenever waste connections, um, thank you, Joe, for being diligent, putting that together. And the last thing, uh, that I would like to say, I know a lot of people in the last two or three weeks have mentioned, hey, we're going to run for this office, or hey, we're going to run for that, or I'm running for reelection, and, uh, so, you know, my term is quickly coming to an end, uh, you know, roughly 18 months ago, but I'll, I do want to let everybody know, I will run for reelection, uh, as mayor. I thoroughly enjoy working with this council, and with Corey, and with David, and with Rusty and Justin, and then over the next four years after that, then look to see what may be available at the state level or the federal level. And so, um, I, I love serving people, I have a heart to serve people, um, and, you know, being a public servant, I take with great, um, there's great responsibility, and I appreciate that. And again, I have learned a lot, I have, I've watched you guys, and I've learned from you all, and, uh, thank you for, you know, uh, us working so well the last two and a half years, and look forward to continuing. So with all that said, I'll shut up, and, uh, we'll pass off to Corey.
Uh, one thing I'll kind of look back on, uh, we did pass your budget, 25, 26 year budget, uh, at the last meetings, uh, and update the equalized tax rate. So your current rate was 1.3358, your new tax rate is 0.72797. So just kind of a reminder about that new tax rate. Uh, the past few weeks, we had a couple of garb, uh, kind of increased garbage complaints. Uh, we and myself met with waste connections representative this morning, uh, they've had some staff outages, people on vacation, which they said, hey, that's no excuse, uh, which all issues should have been resolved today, so I felt part of that conversation. Uh, your road repairs, J.B. Assafosman here paving the past three or four weeks, uh, you can kind of see the handouts that we handed out there, um, redone the handicap parking at the library, uh, a couple of drain crossings on Richard Drive, Maple Lane water cuts, Shubman Lane water cuts, Hill Drive water cuts, and we've already started to work at Carmichael Park. Uh, so we redone the entrance to Carmichael Park, BB, our parks director, uh, has put the new gate, new signs and stuff up over there, uh, and then paving will be ongoing probably for the next four or six weeks with additional water cuts, and we are looking to push further on down the agenda, we'll talk about that, about starting to pave actual roads. Uh, roads being repaired with water cuts, Sierra Airport Road, Edmonds Drive, Callor Circle, Kansas Lane, and Breeden Lane. Uh, the paving jobs, again, which we will discuss, uh, will be Wright Street and Wimrock Road. Um, well, the speed table updates, J.B. Assafosman giving the go ahead of the, uh, the one speed table on Richard Drive and the two on Midway. Uh, Arrowhead Park, uh, have reached out to Army Corps Engineers, which again, we have no update, they did tell us that was going to be a two to three year timeframe anyway, but, uh, but again, what you mentioned with everything going on, play around the country, I would have sent some emails, tried to get at least a sort of a rush, as long as we could. Uh, the events, again, what you mentioned, the back to school bash, uh, Saturday, Ju- July the 19th, from 5 to 7, uh, we'll close down Main Street for a couple hours, this will be in front of the babies, eat some treats. Uh, big thing here is we'll be handing out free, uh, school supplies for all school age kids. One thing we need to look at would be next week's council meeting. Uh, so where we put this one back to July the 10th, we have the next scheduled council meeting will be July the 17th, so if you all want to look at canceling that.
Do we need to have a meeting? Do you have a need for a meeting?
The next, we're looking at doing the financials on this one, so if we cancel next week, we probably ought to start the August 7th, what we're meeting at 6:00. And that would give us enough time to go through the financials, we have the, uh, I think, vehicle purchase, there'll be another capital purchase for the water plant, uh, so it'll probably be a lot to go through at the, for the August meetings. So I'm fine if everybody else is fine with going and canceling next, next week. But again, I, I want to start your August meeting a little bit early.
I'm having surgery, and I won't be here in August. So, I mean, just have, you know that, I mean, you probably forgot to.
No, no, I mean.
We talked about it, I won't be here in August.
Okay.
And I will be on vacation the first of August.
Okay. So I mean, we can have a meeting next week if we need to, but I mean, we'll still have, obviously, the, the first August meeting, but I mean, that'll be a water board meeting. Yes, I mean, that's kind of council's pleasure.
Well, you might, uh, have a meeting next Thursday night, and then skip the August 1st council meeting and water board meeting, and put the August water and water board meetings this, this, the third Thursday.
Have one meeting.
So your first, your first Thursday would be August the 7th, and that would put everything on August the 21st.
Yeah. I'm not saying to do that, I'm just simply saying that's an option.
Yeah.
Dr. Joe ain't not being here either the first, the first week.
She's having rotator cuff surgery.
And I'll pick up one.
One wasn't enough, I have to go for two.
I mean, I could make whatever, so again, whatever.
It's whatever you all think, I mean, I'm just, I just say that because you just need to aware. You don't want me making decisions on pain medication, I can assure you of that. Good to hear.
Hey, that's all I've got at the moment.
Uh, thank you, Corey. Uh, Ms. Bailey.
The only thing I have is the back to school bash that was already mentioned, um, that we will close the road for a couple hours, like they said, we have a ton of free school supplies, thanks to Beach Park and Library. Um, we'll have a lot of free stuff for the kids to do, a lot of activities, so anybody that can come is obviously welcome, and if they're tired about that, that's welcome.
And the dates and time on that chart?
It starts at 5:00, we'll close the road right at 5:00, and go till 7 on July 19th. And I always use Devaney's as the location spot, so if you don't know where to go, just go near Devaney's and you'll see it all.
Sure, okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Van Hooy.
Uh, back to the issue, we didn't really just find why I did this thing about. I think we probably should just go ahead and have a meeting now. I think we probably should just go ahead and have a meeting next week, and look at those financials. And then if you want to just have one meeting in August, that's up to you guys.
Well, we decide that's the next meeting, or next week, see how it figures.
Yeah, I think, and if there's anything you really want information, or something you really want passed, you might want to bring it next week.
Okay.
Anything we need to know about, right away.
Any questions there?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holland.
Cory, could we contact, I guess Anderson County, the grants between us and Oak Ridge? I mean, the gateway to Oliver Springs, Oak Ridge, was horrible.
Yeah.
Could we, either that, or could we get with Oak Ridge and split up, they mow half, we mow half, or something?
Yeah.
This is getting beaten, it's by every year, I remember seeing this last year.
And the tree is still there.
Yeah, there's a tree on.
Yeah, well, my crew tomorrow, my crew didn't know this, but tomorrow, that, that tree's getting cleaned up. Yeah, I'm tired driving by it, I don't, I know it's a state or county, I don't care.
We're gonna have to wear ours, because it'll be buried up there at the grass.
So here's the thing, I mean, if we go up there and clean that up, I mean, that's reimbursable through T-Dot, so we're into the next fiscal year anyway.
Oh, did we finish, did we, did we finish out?
Yeah, you're about $43,000, of which you just received, I think.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah, thirty-nine.
Well, as a point of contract, though, does that contract include areas of the four lane outside the town?
I don't know that. It's any, it does state any right-of-way, or T-Dot right-of-way, but it is something to look at, though.
You stake some notes out there.
I'm guessing we have to tell them. Word was.
Then you get free milk, and free cheese, and free meat.
Anything else was wrong?
Yes, Cory, have we notified the back stacks people, start working out some kind of plan for the back end?
So we have, we've started putting that file together, although that's the mayor, myself, and Ms. Ramona, have been discussing that, getting that put together, plus we have reached back out to our attorney on multiple things, a few letters that had to be sent out, plus the, the back tax stuff, so that is in process right now.
Does it need to be called 101, or go for the, I didn't know it's a late deal. Yeah. And then would you get any, uh, update on the codes of the boys' club?
So, I do, I do get the, I guess, press release that Rome County has hired a new codes enforcement officer, don't remember the guy's name, he's from North Carolina. Big thing is he's on, starts October the 22nd. So currently, Taylor has been filling in, he's gonna continue filling in until, until the new codes officer ships in.
Reggie Hux.
Hux. Yeah, Hux is his last name, yeah. But everything, I guess, all of the projects that Glenn was working on, everything's supposed to go through your county mayor right now. So there's, there's kind of been some holdup there on multiple items.
And I did ask Wade about that yesterday, and it's supposed to be expeditiously getting to us, that report.
And would that affect our planning with the, since we can't have a low level?
So Glenn, Glenn Colder's been moving full-time to the Rome County plan, as with Brooke, so nothing should change other than he's probably be able to spend more time up here with us now. So I mean, we're gonna try to take advantage of that.
Yes, sir. Ms. Van.
Um, I guess, just I'll ask you, do you know anything about Butler Cemetery, or, I don't think it's been, anything the county was going to do?
Yeah, I can reach out to Sheriff Parker, let me, let you know. What was that?
Uh, Butler Cemetery, behind Ace Park where?
Yeah.
I went by there at the double park, it's been raining today. And he said.
This is possible, may I tell you?
He had asked in Easton County, was going to, because I had requested the city to do it.
Yeah.
And then, um, an update on Red Button Park, Debbie Sparks and the Rome County work crew is back down there, updating the landscape. It will be the fall before we plant the bushes and flowers, but I appreciate all the help they're giving.
The sheriff's department, they want to.
Mm-hmm. Rome County's. If you can have it, drove down there this week, go by, big difference. And Cory, can we take the, we've got Glenn's, and then they got the old stuff from the, the ponds. Is, can we do something with that?
Yeah, I mean, is everything got finalized up right there where you fit?
Yeah.
Sounds like beautification to me.
It, it absolutely is, yes.
Good.
Yes.
Where was this final topic there, is easy, right?
Pardon?
What was the last thing you said?
Uh, ask about cleaning up.
Debris removal?
Yeah.
City pickup of debris.
From where?
Red Button Park.
Okay.
That's a loaded question, you must have been remembering what I said. And that's all.
Thank you. And speaking of beautification projects, I know Rusty's not here, but we got one coming up, and just, uh, it's gonna be September, October, and maybe October, let it cool down a little bit, but we got another one coming up, I'm excited about, so. And one thing I did forget that I want to mention real quick before we get to our police chief update, our, our fire department will be getting $50,000 from Anderson County this year. And I want to, I want to publicly thank the county commission for making that happen, and not to go into a lot of details, but, you know, we are a voluntary fire department, and we rely heavily on funding from Anderson County. In the last two years, they have given us, I think, around $125,000, and this year, again, 50 more thousand, but there was a thought that we might not get the funding, and I, I, when I found out about it, I was out of fire here in town, and started very diligently with county commissioners and others to make sure that Norris, Rocky Top, and Oliver Springs was not left out. And thankfully, the one commissioner who spearheaded the project along with another was able to get that for us, and I'm very thankful, and I want to publicly say thank you. Also, there is the July 18th hot lug at the American Legion, so that's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., want to give American Legion a shout-out. So thank you for being here tonight, so. And without further ado, Chief. You good? Chief's good. So, Chief Bailey's not here, old business, none, new business, discuss and possibly approve the paving of Wright Street.
So, firsthand help proposal from Rogers Group, so Rome County Schools is doing some drain upgrades and improvements on the football field. So along with that, Rogers Group will be paving the parking lot on the upper end of the football field. So while they were there, Casey O'Massard reached out if we wanted to have Wright Street paved while they were there working. So Rogers Group gave us a quote of, I think it's 11,800. So we did reach out to two other paving contractors, and when we told them, hey, Rogers Group's here going to pave this, they wouldn't even turn a bid in. They said, since they're already mobilized here, there's no way we could touch their, their bid, and they didn't even know what the bid was. So you've done your due diligence trying to acquire the grid bids, but Rogers Group bid to pave Wright Street is 11,800, and that will be paid for through State Street 8, of which you had, I think, you put 135,000, 140,000 in that to start paving roads this year.
So, do we have a motion? So we need to seek a motion, is that correct?
Yes.
So do we have a motion to pave Wright Street?
That would come out of which fund?
State Street, which State Street 8.
And we have how much in that one?
I think there's 280,000 in it, right now. Wait, and you did, you set aside, I think it's close to 140,000 for capital projects all there.
I made the motion.
Motion, Ms. Van Hook, do we have a second?
Double second.
Second, Ms. Van. Any discussion? Roll call, Joe.
Charlie Booth?
Yes.
Chris Van Hook?
Yes.
Turn on.
Yes. Joe? Uh, be discussed and possibly approved of paving of Windrock Road from the bridge to the city limits sign.
So, been trying to fire the quotes for this, this project here for, this is going on two months now. So JB asphalt's the one quote that's been turned in. I've actually got Mr. Brent Galloway here, represented from Windrock Lane Company, if he'd like to speak on behalf of this, too. So what we went around doing is looking at and trying to identify kind of your, your highest, I guess, used roads, and then kind of your worst, worst-shaped roads. And I know Brett's, every time I see him, he mentions this, I mean, that's a lot, I guess he'll probably his number one complaint now is, I mean, you have all these people coming from out of state, out of country, bringing, you know, these hundred thousand dollar campers, trailers, RVs and stuff, and that's the first thing they see when they turn off a truck and a bulldozer going through this road. So I mean, this is, again, Windrock Road's the one we've identified first, and that's, I mean, we'd like to go ahead and proceed with that.
Now, we'll say that we did meet with another contractor.
This afternoon, this afternoon, about, it's about 5:00 o'clock.
And, and very hopeful that he will be able to come in.
Yeah.
A few thousand less than what we were quoted.
So we, I mean, we tried Rogers Group, multiple times, multiple calls, emails, and I mean, they just, they just won't send a bid to us. We've talked to three additional paving contractors for Windrock, and, I mean, I don't know if they're busy right now or what, but again, you've done your due diligence trying to, trying to acquire the bids.
Will the other groups send a bid in?
They will.
The one from today, this afternoon, when I met him over, we kind of went on site, looked at it, and he's supposed to have me something by tomorrow.
He gave us a verbal, but we need something on paper.
Yeah.
And what I would say, and I know, I spoke with Grant earlier, I want, I want to see us do this, but I think it would be worth waiting a week to see if we can get it done in three, four hours.
Especially since you've finished the schedule, we're meeting next Thursday.
Right, right. The 6th.
I mean, we'll have the written bid.
Yeah, we will, we will.
So. Here's an announcement that says, welcome to the off-road area of Oliver Springs, this is your first off-road. We need dicks and hoes to make it work.
I mean, that's, that's true, that's true.
Who one gets full experience and be free?
Yeah, yeah. Brent, do you have anything you want to add?
One thing, Joe, I would say is people don't go four-wheeling in their motorhomes, that's true.
That would be an exception for golf, because offer that as the terms.
I've been, I've pestered Cory literally probably once a month for the last hour of the fall, and, and for those that don't know, for the last two years, we have had visitors from all 50 states.
Wow.
Including Hawaii and Alaska. I don't remember foreign countries two years ago, but last year was six foreign countries in addition to all 50 states. And so, you know, nothing says welcome to Windrock like knocking the dentures out of your mouth right before you come in with a, with your, you know, 50,000 dollar motorhome. The other thing I've mentioned to Cory is there's some, there's some branches that are hanging down over the road that, if you're not, if a tall vehicle is not meeting somebody, it's fine, because they can move over, but when they meet somebody, they're forced to meet in the wood line, I guess it would be on the west side of Windrock Road, that, that really need, and it's, I recognize sometimes residents aren't real happy when you cut branches on their trees, but they're, you know, they're hanging low, and you can see bark skinned off of them and things like that where motorhomes and things run into them.
So, I'll tell you what, tomorrow, bearing how our first job goes, which I'm very hopeful that we can turn it in three hours, maybe less, we'll get that tomorrow.
Okay.
We will. My, my crew.
So, Rusty and myself have spoken about this, too, about even going up Green Street, and kind of being part of the code there. And there's some areas around the American Legion building we got to look at, too. But, I mean, going around town, looking, getting prepared for school.
Right.
Because we've got a lot of hanging around town, too, with that, you know, I have spoken to Brent about that, that issue up there.
Okay, we'll get that addressed.
Thank you. One, one other thing I'll mention, you mentioned earlier, I drive by through the four lane, I live just barely in Knox County, so I drive out of Oak Ridge and see the center median. And it does look shaggy, but pollinators are very important, and if you actually look at that grass, there is a ton of wildflower in that.
Really?
Various things, every time I drive by, just look at it. Boy, you can be there tomorrow. Look and see the volume of wildflowers, I actually noticed it this morning, I was quite surprised, and, and that benefits trees, plants, fruits, you know, all that. So, even though it's not purely, it's not beautifully manicured, it is providing ecological benefit.
I truly.
Put a sign up that says, Oliver Springs Wildflower Park.
I do, I like it.
Sponsored by Windrock Park.
That's it.
Hopefully by the sign.
Even better, all right. So we will pick up Windrock Road at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have our second bid in, and then we'll take action.
Yeah.
Going forth, okay. Last item of business, discuss and possibly approve ordinance number 2025-07-10, an ordinance on the Town of Oliver Springs Tennessee establishing a privacy policy for text messaging services.
So, kind of what we discussed during the water board meeting, again, customers needing to update their contact data cell numbers and email addresses, the one thing we've got have in place is a privacy policy before we can send out any of the bulk messaging. So your ordinance number 2025-07-10, ordinance of Town of Oliver Springs Tennessee establishing a privacy policy for text messaging services, whereas Town of Oliver Springs utilizes text messaging services to communicate with residents and other stakeholders for the purpose of providing updates, alerts, and other information related to business services function. Whereas the Town recognizes the importance of safeguarding personal information, is committed to protecting the privacy and security of individuals who use or receive the Town's text messaging services. Now, therefore, being ordained by the mayor and council, Town of Oliver Springs Tennessee has follows. Section 1, purpose of this ordinance is to establish a privacy policy governing the Town's use of text messaging services in accordance with applicable privacy standards and best practices. Section 2, information collected when individual opts in to receive text messages from the Town, following information may be related to phone number, message content, and carrier information. Use of information, information collected may be used to send updates, alerts related to Town's services and events, respond to inquiries and customer service requests, improve the Town's text messaging service, and comply with legal obligations and protect the Town's Opt-in and opt-out procedures, opt-in by providing phoner or agreeing to receive text message communications, individuals grant permission to receive such messages. Opt-out, individuals may opt-out at any time by replaying stop to any Town issued message. After opting out, no further messages will be sent unless individual sends a start to the Town's number. Data security, the Town will use reasonable administrative, technical, physical measures to protect security of personal information. However, no transmission over mobile networks is entirely secure, and the Town cannot guarantee absolute data security. Sharing of information, Town may share collective information under the following circumstances: from third-party service providers who support the delivery of text messaging services subject to confidentiality obligations, for legal compliance, claims to penis court orders or regulatory requests, as part of a business transfer, such as a merger or reorganization, with explicit consent of the individual, the Town will not sell, rent, or otherwise share personal mobile information with third parties for commercial purposes. Children's privacy, Town's text messaging services are not intended for children under the age of 13. Town does not knowingly collect or retain information from children. If such data is inadvertently collected, it will be deleted upon discovery. Changes to privacy policy, this privacy policy may be updated from time to time, updated, updates will be posted publicly, and effective date will be revised accordingly. Contact information for questions or concerns regarding this privacy policy, please contact the city manager at Alder Friends City Hall. Effective date, this ordinance shall take effect July 10th, 2025, Public Welfare requiring two thousand twenty-five, Public Welfare requiring it.
So this has to be in place before.
Instead of.
Before we can even, everything's set up, but this has to be in place before we can start generating messages and sending anything.
So do we have a motion to accept this policy so we can get this moved forward?
Make the motion.
Mr. Vane makes the motion. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Charlie? All right. Any discussion?
Two seconds, Dave.
Charlie. All right. Roll call, Joe.
Charlie Vane?
Yes.
Chris Van Hooch?
Yes.
Kerry Hall?
Yes.
Ricky Devaney?
Yes.
Thank you, Joe. Motion passes. And I'll just reiterate what I said at the end of the Water Board meeting. Super proud and excited about how we're moving our town forward incrementally, slowly, you know, so it's not overwhelming change all at once. But we're trying to make it more friendly to every citizen, make it easier and more efficient. Again, we know we're behind the curve, but we're working to get better. And, you know, that is commendable, that we are continuing to work to get better. And we just don't say, oh, well, that's the way it's been for twenty-nine years. Well, okay, we can work to get better, right? We can. And we have and we continue to. So thank you, guys. Motion to adjourn?
Come here.
All in favor, say.